See it happen. Yeah, I'm sure it has. So there's got to be some cases.
Good evening. Welcome. Thank you for joining us. This is the Marion City Council meeting for Thursday, July 6th. Please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Please be seated. Roll call, please.
Mr. Missman?
Here.
Mr. Johnson?
Here.
Mr. Harper?
Here.
Mayor Abu Osley?
Here.
Mr. Brandt?
Here.
Ms. Mensah?
Here.
Mr. Storned?
Thank you. First item on the agenda is a proclamation for Parks and Recreation Month. I've asked. Oh, I'm sorry. We have, we have the moment of silence. I forgot. Sorry, Sarah. We'll do a moment of silence. Thank you. Okay, now we have the proclamation for Parks and Recreation Month, and I've asked Councilmember Mensah to present that. I know we have some representatives of the Parks Department here to accept that.
Near and dear to my heart department. Okay, so whereas parks and recreation are an integral part of successful communities and fundamental to the well-being of all people, and whereas parks and recreation promotes time spent in nature, which positively impacts brain health and encourages physical activity through sports, hiking, bicycling, aquatics, and many other activities that promote active lifestyles. And whereas park and recreation programming and educational activities, such as out-of-school time programming, youth sports, and environmental education are critical to childhood development. And whereas parks and recreation enhance a community's economic prosperity through higher property values, increased tourism, crime reduction, and the attraction and retention of businesses. And whereas parks and recreation are essential in providing adaptable infrastructure that makes our communities resilient in the face of natural disasters and climate change. And whereas our parks and natural recreation areas ensure the ecological beauty of our community and provide a place for people of all ages to connect with nature and recreate outdoors. And whereas the U.S. House of Representatives has designated July as Parks and Recreation Month, and whereas the city of Marion is proud of its more than 600 acres of parks, trails, and natural areas, and recognizes the benefits derived from such resources in promoting the well-being of our community and giving residents opportunities for a great quality of life. Now, therefore, I, Sarah Mensah, on behalf of Nicholas Abu Osley, Mayor of the City of Marion, Iowa, do hereby proclaim July 2023 as Parks and Recreation Month.
Thank you. This year, the theme for Parks and Recreation Month is Where Community Grows. We are celebrating Park and Recreation Month this July by celebrating the vital role parks and recreation professionals play in bringing people together, providing essential services and fostering growth in our communities. We encourage everyone in Marion to help us celebrate Park and Rec Month by going to a park, playing on a playground, cooling off at the pool or splash pad, and also enjoy one of our many events coming up this month, including movies at Thomas and Loud Park or a Shania Twain tribute concert at Loud Park. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks to everyone in our Parks Department for all the great work that you do in helping us reach higher every day to give people a great quality of life. It's a very integral part of the quality services that we provide and that people love about their city. So thank you for all your work. Okay, next on the agenda is a update regarding transit service in Marion. You have Kesha from Planning Department?
Yeah, Kesha Billings, the Community Development Department, Planning Division. But I would like to bring up here Brad DeBauer with Cedar Rapids Transit, who's going to provide an update of where we are with transit in Marion. So this is something that we have constant communication with Brad throughout the year about transit service. Where can we improve? Where do we, where do we want changes? But I think it's important for Brad to come up to council and kind of give a where we are with transit. What's the trends? What's going on? And then later in the, in the agenda is the 28E agreement with our continued partnership with Cedar Rapids. So, thank you, Brad.
Thank you. Hi, Brad.
Hello, Brad DeBauer with Cedar Rapids Transit. So just, yeah, this will be, this will be brief, but as you know during your budget discussions last go around, we had some different options, but decided to go ahead and stay with where things were at with their current bus route, which is our Route 20 number, or excuse me, the yellow route up there. So it's been a circulator service. And you see the ridership as far as the 48,000 rides, 31.6% increase. That is, it's nice to see because system-wide, we were up about 32%. We're back to about 77% of where we were pre-COVID. So, you know, transit ridership throughout the country dropped to like about 43, 540% during the, during the pandemic. Slowly coming back, but this is our biggest year increase thus far. So it's nice to see that Route 20 was part of that increase. And again, so it's, that's, that's, the ridership is starting to bounce back and utilize the service the way that they had prior to the pandemic. As far as the, the 28E agreement, this, our agreement is for, for this fiscal year would be for $448,000. That, we use a fully allocated cost model to calculate that. So it's the fully allocated cost based on the number of hours, the number of miles that we provide within the city of Marion. And then we give a prorated share of whatever we get for state and federal operating subsidies. So we provide the service on a break-even basis. So we see that as just something that is, is, you know, from a regional perspective, that is the way to proceed with the, the service that we provide, whether it be the city of Marion or to the city of Hiawatha. The 28E agreement also does include the paratransit service that we have a contract with Lincoln County Lifts to provide. And that is the paratransit services for those individuals who cannot use the public transit service. Not necessarily by choice, because more, you know, more convenient to be, to get a door-to-door type pickup, but because they truly can't use the service. It's more of a safety net. That was the intent of the ADA for paratransit service. And then it also includes our service that we have contracted with NTS Horizons as far as the after-hour service contract that we have with them. So both Cedar Rapids, Marion, and Hiawatha are covered under those service contracts. So that is all I have. If you have any questions, be more happy to answer them. And that's it.
Thank you, Brad. Questions? Go ahead, Steve.
Just a forward thank, and we're seeing a lot of, so Iowa City and Des Moines now talking about electric buses. So I'm just curious to see what conversations are being had in Cedar Rapids.
Yeah, I was on vacation last week, and I came back, and I was looking through my mom's newspapers, and I saw the story in Iowa City. So I knew I was going to get questions from my city council members as well. Where we stand on that is we're still in the analysis stage. So the, the federal government came out with a mandate back in December, I think it was '21, that said that if you're going to apply for federal funds for no emission vehicles, which electric buses would be, would be that, you have to develop a zero emission transition plan. And so they're, they're done funding pilot programs. They want to make sure that if a city, a system ends up purchasing their vehicles using federal funds, that they've done their due diligence. They've made sure that it's, it's, it's easy to buy the bus. Our manufacturers will be more than happy to sell us buses. But we got to make sure they're going to work. And, you know, one of the, one of the concerns that we have at this point is how they're going to hold up in cold weather environments. But we applied through, for funds for a planning study through the quarter MPO. And we have a consultant on board that is, that is looking at that. We hope to have that, that study completed by this fall so that the Cedar Rapids City Council can make a determination as to how we're going to proceed. Now, the newspaper article with Iowa City in it was the second year of a five-year funding cycle. So we still have three more opportunities that we'll be able to apply for funding if it's decided to move forward at that time.
Okay, thanks. Anyone else? Go ahead, Gage.
Just a quick one, and I think you briefly mentioned it, but just wanted to double check that the number for FY '23 in the 31% increase from last year, how close is that to getting to those pre-pandemic numbers?
We're, at system-wide, we're 77%. We're, we're just, we, we're just shy of a million rides system-wide. And our pre-pandemic benchmark was about 1.2 million. And like I said, the Route 20 route is right on, right in line with all the other routes that we have as far as that ridership increase.
Thanks.
Anyone else?
Yeah, Brad, I just kind of a look-back comment. And Kesha, the work that was done to present some alternatives for our consideration earlier this year that we didn't elect to do just because of financial-related issues. I just, again, want to thank you for the creativity that was applied to that. And I'm hoping that at some point in the relatively near future, we can, we can reexamine those and maybe get that in focus. So, in play.
Kesha and I already talked about some ideas. We also talked with NTS about some other options that we might want to go ahead and bring up for discussion. So, yeah.
Thank you, Brad.
Thank you.
Thanks, Kesha. Next, we have another presentation on the compensation study. We have Lucas from our HR department.
Good evening. So we wanted to provide a project update. I do have the Baker-Tilly team on Zoom. So I worked, I think Lexi's presented before. So we have Lexi Colton again. She's the one that has, I've been working with regularly. And then Jada Kent is also on the call. She is helping with the overarching project and helping us make sure that we're, we're on the right path. So with that, I will hand it over to Lexi or Jada.
Thanks, Lucas. You can go ahead and abandon. There we go. All right. So I'm just going to talk at a high level, kind of the phases that we went through to get to where we are today. And that is looking internally at positions, externally at the positions, and then kind of plugging that data in to a pay plan to establish great assignments that are internally and externally equitable. So these are the five phases that the project has kind of moved through. We started with data collection. This was us getting to know each other, learning about the challenges the city, the city is facing, the, what current pain points the, the classification and compensation program experiencing so that we can look at those solutions as we go through the project. Collected a whole bunch of information, including questionnaires that were completed by employees and reviewed by supervisors. And then those questionnaires really became the foundation of the whole rest of the study as we moved into the market assessment and collecting base pay information. The data we used from the PAQs to kind of verify what are the positions, to make sure we've got good matches. Getting into a position review, looking internally at positions, making sure if positions are doing the same thing, do they need to be classified in the same title or the opposite? We've got two different titles performing the same work. Should they be called the same thing? So just looking at positions internally and, and getting those classifications where they need to be. And then getting into pay plans, looking at what does the city currently use for pay structures, building new pay structures, and then establishing great assignments for those as we go along. What we have in progress, we're kind of towards the finish line, wrapping things up, and then a few more deliverables, and we'll be all the way across that finish line. So I'll get into a little bit more of the information about those bigger phases for the market. We worked with the city to come up with a list of peer organizations, those that you compete for with talent, who you lose employees to or gain them from, but who you compare with in terms of similar-sized cities or organizations, same services, to make sure that we really get a good diverse, diverse list of organizations to make sure we're matching to the positions that you have in the city. So this is the 12 organizations that were identified. We were able to compile data from 11 of those. The city of Johnson does not have data in these results, but everyone else we were able to get data from. We also included data from published sources like Compaan Analyst, Bureau of Labor Statistics, and the Economic Research Institute. And matches from these published sources acts like the private sector in the data set. So for positions that do have an analogous match in the private sector, we were able to plug those in so that we do kind of have that threshold of here's what the private sector is paying for those positions. So on the internal side of things, we have our own point factor job evaluation tool. It measures all positions based on these nine compensable factors. Looking at the minimum qualifications, so the education and experience required in the job, what level of work is being performed? Is it dangerous work? What are the working conditions like? Are you supervising others? Just these nine criteria act really like a measuring stick. So looking at all positions, maybe within one department, it may be fairly obvious what the hierarchy of those jobs are. But as you start looking across the entire city, and it's not clear anymore where the positions kind of line up, this, the point factor system works like a measuring stick to establish that hierarchy of all jobs based on the same consistent criteria. So this is how we establish that hierarchy. And then the market data is really how we end up plugging that hierarchy into the pay plan. So getting into pay plans, we talked a lot about what kind of pay plans do you have? What's not working? What do you like about them? What do you want to keep? How many pay plans do we need? And so oftentimes, having more than one pay plan has the benefit of making decisions to make structure adjustments, for an example, based on whatever market conditions are happening to that group. So public safety positions, for an example, very sensitive to the market. So if a different decision needs to be made for how to adjust that pay structure, you've already got them in their own pay plan, and you can do that. So we've ultimately established four new pay plans for general positions. There's about 68 positions there. For the ASME positions, which has 12 positions, fire, which has six, and then police, which has seven. So I'll get into those pay plans a little bit here. I'm not going to get into the police pay plan. But for the general pay plan, we have an open-range pay plan. And so that means from the minimum to the maximum, it's just open range. Anyone can be anywhere between that minimum and maximum. There's not defined steps. We have 19 grades, and the range spread is going to be the distance from the minimum to the maximum. And so you see a little bit more narrow range spread in grade one through four, and then it starts to get a little bit wider, moving from 30% to 40, and then 50 as you get towards the bottom. And that is with the intention of moving employees through the range faster for those more narrow range spreads. If you think of someone starting at the minimum and then moving through that pay range as time goes on, by the time they get to the midpoint, they should be fully proficient in their role. The midpoint represents the market value. So that's why we have a more narrow range spread at the top to accommodate those positions that have a shorter learning curve. Versus as you get further into the pay plan with a wider learning curve, it may take a few years to master those jobs. And so it takes longer to get to the midpoint. And so the midpoint differential is a consistent 10%. That's the distance between each grade at the midpoint. And that is demonstrated a little bit better in the next slide. As you can see, the stair step. So this just kind of demonstrates that same information. These are the grades one through 19, but as they kind of stair-step onto each other. And so the goal here is to kind of find that sweet spot of enough overlap, but not too much overlap. So that as employees move up, it's not going to break the bank to get a promotion, but it's also enough of an incentivization to move up and take on more responsibility. You can't make the same amount by not doing that much work. So you have to move up and to receive that. So this is that pay table. And then on the next slide is the regression analysis that we use to build this pay plan. So we use the regression in a few different ways. Along the bottom, you'll see zero all the way up to 1,000. That represents the total job evaluation score. On the left side, we've got represented the market average midpoint. So each of these dots is where a benchmark position intersects with those two numbers and falls on this chart. And so that, that black line is that trend line through all of those dots. It is how, what is the correlation between internal and external data? According to our regression, it's an 86% relationship, which is pretty high. It's positive relationship. That means you can use our job evaluation system going forward to maintain this pay plan. So new positions or positions change, you can evaluate those and establish what great assignment they should be in. But this also demonstrates the proposed pay plan that we've built for the general positions. This midpoint line is right on top of the regression. And these other lines represent the maximum and the minimum. So we've built a pay plan that fits right on top of your natural distribution of jobs. And so we use that just to kind of make sure that we are online with the positions that we're building a pay plan for. So for the ASME positions, this is a little bit smaller of a pay plan. It's also a step plan. So we've got grades one through eight, because we don't have as many positions on this pay plan. So we don't need to accommodate a much wider, much, many more grades. But we do have 11 steps. So the minimum being step one, the maximum being step 11. I believe in the current ASME contract, once you get to about year three, it starts having wider gaps. You don't move to the next one until five, and then 10, and then 20. And then this proposed pay plan, it would be six months, and then every year up to the 10-year mark. So employees would continue to move a step each year. So with the percent between each step, we've got a 3.5. And then the distance between each grade is about 5%, and you can see that stair step in the chart below. And then finally, the fire pay plan, similarly is an 11-step plan with the minimum at step one, maximum at 11. Also has a 3.5% between each step. The midpoint differential is a little bit different. There's one grade that has a little bit of a bump, and that is just to kind of accommodate the positions that are on this pay plan. They're, you know, similar in nature, but different in levels. And so we needed to accommodate the different levels that were happening at those rank-and-file stops. So next slide, please. So to that, we've built the new pay plans. We've established great assignments within those pay plans. And where we are today is just kind of putting the final rubber stamp on everything, documenting final reports, getting that final presentation with you all scheduled. And I mentioned before that our job evaluation system can be used to maintain this going forward. So we're also going to be providing training to Lucas and whomever is going to be helping administer this pay plan going forward, handing over the manual to our job evaluation system so that can be done. And then a couple of other items that we'll be delivering, benefits report, the job description updates, and recommendations on some of your paid practices.
So in summary, that's our project update. And so do you have any questions? Could be anything that we covered or next steps?
Yeah, if, if we could go back, I think one slide. Yes, this is it. So for that pay grade that has the 8% midpoint differential, is that a feature of just where things are at now, or is that intended to be a permanent midpoint differential as we move forward relative to managing this overall structure? I guess if you see what I'm saying.
Yeah, I would say, I would say semi-permanent in terms of if you're going to apply a COLA, it would just shift the pay structure forward. You wouldn't really shift it up or down, just kind of move it over. So that jump that you see is, I'm going to guess, where, from a firefighter to whatever the next level is, it's meant to kind of accommodate what the market is saying is the jump there. So it's just kind of how the math of making market data fit into a pay table and how that turned out. So it ended up being an 8%.
Okay, thanks. That, that clarifies it for me. Thank you.
Yeah, this is Steve. So I've been involved in my past career in compensation surveys, salary surveys. And I would have to just at least make sure I comment, the manner in how this was done and what you have outlined is very good. So the detail that you went into, the involvement of all of the individuals, the employees, the managers, the number of cities and other surveys that you looked at was done in a very, very good manner. Biggest question I've got, you touched upon it right at the very end, that you're going to train Lucas on how to keep this updated. That was a mouthful right there. My question really is, going forward, that's easy to do maybe in the next year, or to how often do you recommend that we go into an in-depth review and getting outside surveys like we did this year? Maybe not everything to the same extent, because we had a system here that needed a huge review, a huge overhaul. So I think it establishes a great baseline. It's important to keep it going, to keep it updated. So how often are we, do we need to go out and get these surveys updated to make sure we're still in with the market?
So doing a comprehensive review like this, you can probably get away with doing it every five to seven years if you do the maintenance every year to keep up. If we keep having pandemics, you probably need to do it every three to five. Really, if you, you know, get a new piece of equipment or new software that's changing a lot of jobs, you need to go in and sort of re-review everything and make sure you're recalibrating your hierarchy and your market. But something that works really well is organizations may cut their positions in half or in thirds and look at a third of the positions this year, a third the next year, and a third the, the following year. So that on a three-year rotating basis, you are taking your, the temperature on kind of each of those position goals.
Well, again, I'm very pleased to see that we now have, in my opinion, a very solid baseline going forward. Congratulations.
Anyone else? Anything else, Lucas?
I'm on my end. Thank you.
Thank you to everyone who's worked hard on this.
Thank you.
Next item is a public forum, which is a time for comments from members of the public on any topic that's on the agenda but not part of a public hearing. If there are comments that are on, on items that are not part of the public hearing, or then, then there'll be time at the end of the agenda for those comments. But at this time, we'll take comments for any item that is on the agenda but not part of a public hearing. Okay, we'll move on to the consent agenda.
Mayor, I move to approve the consent agenda as follows. Items A1 through F1, resolutions 31482 through 31487.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda as presented, including items A1 through F1, resolutions 31482 through 31487. Any discussion? All who's in favor of the motion, please say aye. Aye. All who's opposed, please say no. The motion is approved. Next section, I will turn over the meeting to the mayor pro temp.
Okay, we're now at the consent agenda with the mayor's abstention.
Mayor pro temp, I move to approve the consent agenda with Mayor Abu Osley's abstention. This will include items E1 through E2 and resolution numbers 31488 through 31489.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda with Mayor Abu Osley's abstention as follows. Items E1 through E2, resolutions 31488 through 31489. Any questions or discussions? I do have one item. And I, this, I think, Mike, you might be the best to answer this. Is this the last payment to Hughes Aerospace for their work on the instrument flight procedure?
It is for the initial flight procedure, but then I think it was every 540 days it had to be updated. So there's a continual annual So there's a continual annual payment for that as well.
Right, okay.
This will get it to the publication, which I believe is August tenth. So that'll get us through the publication, but then there's the maintenance.
Okay, very good. I appreciate that. This is a major development for the airport, having a flight procedure that pilots can use as they are on their approaches into into the airport. Okay, thank you. Any other questions? All right, it's been moved and seconded. As stated, all those in favor of the consent agenda with the mayor's abstention, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Back to the mayor. Oh, it's me. Your honor, I move to approve ordinance number twenty-three dash eighteen, amending section one dash one regarding general provisions and subsection three thirteen dash ten point seven A regarding parking regu- regulations of the Marion Code of Ordinances. This is our initial consideration.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to approve ordinance number twenty-three dash eighteen, amending section one dash one regarding general provisions and subsection three thirteen dash ten point seven A regarding parking regulations of the Code of Ordinances. Discussion. All those in favor of the motion to approve ordinance number twenty-three dash eighteen, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. The motion is approved. The next item, we'll go ahead and make the motion and then we have a presentation.
Mayor, I move to approve resolution number three one four nine zero, approving change order number four with Boomerang Corp regarding the Indian Creek Trunk Sewer Segment Seven Project Regarding Rock Blasting.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to approve resolution number three one four nine zero, approving change order number four with Boomerang Corporation regarding the Indian Creek Trunk Sewer Segment Seven Project concerning rock blasting. Our city engineer has a presentation and then we have some people here to answer questions, so.
Yes, your honor, so I have Brad and Tim from Boomerang and DJ from Olson's Explosives. So I'm going to give a little bit of background. We have some video to watch and then we'll open it up to questions. So this is our Indian Creek Segment Seven. So this is that trunk sewer that we're installing south of Highway one hundred. This is upgrading it from a thirty-six to a sixty-inch pipe. This picture on the left, this is their drill bit that they actually bought for this project and put on the end of their end loader. It looks like something from a Dr. Evil movie. This actually is then used to cut through the rock that's out there. To give you an idea, I know not everyone knows how to read engineering plans. But this is what's called a plan and profile sheet. So the top of this color portion is the plan view, so that's looking straight down. The profile is the vertical. If you were to take a cut of a piece of cake, you're looking into that, you can see that we did slow borings ahead of time and there's twenty-seven foot of rock in this approximately forty-foot of cut they're having to go through. So that's why they built the special rig that we have seen. And this is it in action. I'll bet we're going to see some video of this. But right now, what they're, they've done is they've gotten to a very hard part of the rock. So we went out there and watched this happen where they were only getting about an inch in thirty seconds. And in that time period, they broke three bits that have the, the heads that have to be then exchanged out. So that works out to about one cubic foot per minute. There's about three hundred cubic feet of rock out there. That means they're going to spend a hundred working days just out there drilling. So thus, the request for blasting. And because of the added cost that that's going to take for time, bits, and just the hardness that it's going to take on that equipment, they're proposing to do this at no cost to the city. Per Iowa SUDAS, so spec statewide urban design and specification specification. They can do rock blasting, but it has to get the engineering approval. While I've worked at the city, we have actually not done rock blasting, but we have done it on other projects prior to me for some sanitary sewer. Most time, we're able to to drill our hammer through it. They have to get insurance coverages, they have to get blasting permits. And then we would do it by change order, which is the item that's on the council agenda tonight. And then obviously, they have to get all the the blasting permits and everything that is part of that. So now, if we want to pull up the video, so the first, this is going to be several things that you're going to see all at once. So first, you're going to see how easy it is to go through when they have softer rock. Then we're going to see what happens now that they're in the harder rock. So here, they're in the softer rock. So you can see, it's not making great progress, but it's it's cutting through that no problem. So still not a fast process, but they're getting through it. This is what's happening now. So you can see we're pretty much just bouncing off the existing surface there. So we're not making much progress out there. And then they actually changed the the head, you'll see, and they changed it to our regular jackhammer. And you can see that even when we do that, so this is the same view, but just up higher. So you can kind of see there, again, they're just bouncing off the rock that's there. So you can see with even the impact hammer, they're not making much progress. So the next two videos that are going to play are actually demonstrations of what the blasting will look like. The first one won't have any audio to it, but they're able to drill in and put the the explosives in there. So you can see it's very limited. And then the next one is actually in an industrial park for, that was done as well. So you can see it's very limited. We actually already have vibration sensors set up at the Frank Lloyd Wright House. If you knew that was even existed up at the top of the hill. So we already had vibration sensors on that. So those vibration sensors will stay there. It's kind of the, an ideal place to have the, this type of explosive happen because there's not much around it. So we're not in like in a residential neighborhood doing this. So staff is recommending that we approve the change order so that we can get this project done. Otherwise, it's going to be years before we can get this project done. And it's not to anybody's benefit to sit out there and just break heads off that drill bit. So I brought the experts with me. Like I said, I got two guys here from Boomerang that are out there working. And I got an explosives expert, that'll be the guy doing the work. And so they're there here to answer any questions that council may have on this.
Thank you. Questions?
So I have two questions. How soon would you be prepared to do the blasting?
You want to come up to, just because we're.
Please come to the microphone.
Just a matter of getting our permits in place. I mean, as soon as those are in place, we could be out there within a couple of weeks.
Okay, so it's the lead time for the permits. And then would, would it be one blasting event? Or would you have to do multiples in order to cover, get the coverage you need?
To get it, kind of just to do it properly, we're looking at maybe as many as six, just because it's a, it's a bigger area in the depth. So we go across at one lift, come back across another lift.
I see.
Just because there's quite a bit of depth in the middle there. But it'd be fairly, I mean, six at, at the most. We might get in there and the rock down lower, if we can get through it, might get done in three blasts. So.
Okay. Rachel, do we need names for the record?
Yeah.
Our presenters, you have the names. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Go ahead. So you kind of alluded to it a little bit. So how long of an area, how big of an expanse are we talking about doing this blasting in?
So then the hard area we're talking is roughly six hundred feet long.
Okay.
And we're thirty foot deep of solid rock. The rest of the job, we're in rock, but only three to four feet, and we can get through that.
Okay, so it's really just concentrated in.
It's just a hillside we're going through. It's a gravity sewer. We have to lay perfect, pretty much level. We're only coming up two inches every hundred feet.
So I'm kind of familiar with the area. I've driven out as close as I can to some of these areas. So I know it's quite a ways away. So the vibrations, I'm assuming you have no concern about those vibrations reaching any residential area at all?
No, I mean, you'll feel it a little bit, but it'd be much smaller than what a thunderstorm will do, environmental factors.
Okay. Okay. What, what are you blasting with, out of curiosity? What are you blasting with?
Product wise?
Yeah.
It's a, down there, if we run into water, it's designed for a bulk emulsion. It's just a bulk explosive water gel. If it was dry, we would use ammonium nitrate and fuel oil mixture.
Okay.
It's much different than years ago when they used dynamite and T N P.
Okay.
It's very stable and safe. We go through about ten to fifteen million pounds a year of it.
Okay, right, thank you.
And so that takes you from the potential hundred working days to how many working days?
Um, by doing, if we're able to blast, we'd probably get through there in about probably two weeks. If not, you're looking at a hundred to a hundred and twenty days or maybe even more. The deeper you go, the harder the rock is getting. And we've, we're down roughly five to eight feet and we have twenty-seven to go.
Are there any risks at all that you, or what are the risks?
From the blasting standpoint?
Yes.
Really nothing. I mean.
We're in a nice, wide-open area, which is really making this proposal nice.
Yeah, I think the residence is six hundred and fifty feet, the Frank Lloyd Wright residence.
Yeah, the closest house is six fifty.
We were doing work in Wisconsin yesterday, two hundred feet from houses.
Okay. Okay, good. Go ahead, Will.
Is there any concern with the proximity to the creek and any damage to the creek bed?
No, we're.
Anything falling in because of vibrations?
No, we're probably more, I could measure it, but guessing we're seven hundred feet from the creek.
Does the DNR have to sign off on doing this since it's within proximity to a watershed or?
I'm not familiar in Iowa, though DNR haven't had any thing involved. We do a lot of blasting in quarries, in wet holes with water. But I'm not familiar with that they have anything.
Yeah, we have all of our normal silt fence and everything up for it and a berm of dirt that we have stockpile between this area and Indian Creek. So it, I don't see how it would impact it at all.
Okay, anything else do you have, Mike, before we bring it back up to council?
No, just gauge for your awareness, this actually has a completion date. So it's not a working day contract. I don't remember what the exact date is, but they have a date that's basically you must complete by such a date. If we did not allow this based on their means and methods, we'd have to extend that date.
Got it. Thank you for that clarification.
Okay, and you said this is at no cost to the city.
No added cost.
No, right, no, no additional cost.
Heard it here, it's all for you.
Okay. I think, anyone else have questions or are we good? Ready, good, okay, thank you. So any further discussion before we vote? Okay, we'll vote. All those in favor of approving resolution number three one four nine zero, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. The motion is approved.
Mayor, I move to approve ordinance number twenty-three dash twelve, amending chapter two eight four dash six F five of the Marion Code of Ordinances related to lot with requirements, final consideration.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to approve ordinance number twenty-three dash twelve, amending chapter two eighty-four dash six F five of the Marion Code of Ordinances related to lot with requirements. Discussion. Okay, all those in favor of the final consideration of ordinance number twenty-three dash twelve, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. Motion is approved.
Mayor, I move to approve ordinance number twenty-three dash fourteen, amending chapter one hundred and twenty-six, article three of the Marion Code of Ordinances regarding electrical code. This is the second consideration.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to approve second consideration of ordinance number twenty-three dash fourteen, amending chapter one twenty-six, article three of the Code of Ordinances regarding electrical code requirements. Discussion. All those in favor of the second consideration of ordinance number twenty-three dash fourteen, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. The motion is approved. Mayor, I move to approve ordinance number twenty-three dash fifteen, amending section one twenty-six dash ninety-two of the Marion Code of Ordinances regarding housing code. And this is the second consideration.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to approve ordinance number twenty-three dash fifteen, amending section one twenty-six dash ninety-two of the Code of Ordinances regarding housing code requirements. Discussion. None? All those in favor of ordinance number twenty-three dash fifteen, second consideration, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. The motion is approved.
Yes, your honor, I move to approve ordinance number twenty-three dash sixteen, amending section two twenty-three dash two of the Marion Code of Ordinances regarding nuisance abatement. This is our second consideration.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to approve the second consideration of ordinance number twenty-three dash sixteen, amending section two twenty-three dash two of the Code of Ordinances regarding nuisance abatement. Discussion. Hey, all those in favor of the second consideration of ordinance number twenty-three dash sixteen, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. The motion is approved.
Mayor, I move to approve ordinance number twenty-three dash seventeen, amending section two four seven dash two and adding a new section to the Marion Code of Ordinances regarding property maintenance. Second consideration.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to approve ordinance number twenty-three dash seventeen, amending section two forty-seven dash two of the Code of Ordinances and adding a new section regarding property maintenance. Discussion. All those in favor of the second consideration of ordinance number twenty-three dash seventeen, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Motion is approved. Next item is a public hearing regarding amendment to table three forty dash five point seven dash one of the Code of Ordinances regarding building setbacks within the light manufacturing and general manufacturing zoning districts. The public hearing is now open. May we have a presentation, please? Dave?
I have to apologize for the size. There's a lot of information on one slide. This is available in your packet, though, for if you need to see it a little clearer. This is a request to amend the table related to bulk setbacks in the manufacturing districts. We did this in October of twenty twenty-two and amended it as shown on the screen. However, with a codification, it appeared just, they just missed this ordinance that changed the, changed the regulations from a twenty-five foot setback to twelve foot setbacks for our smaller industrial lots under one and a half acres. So this proposed amendment is really just putting it back to how the council approved it back last year and just got missed in codification somehow. It caught all the others around the same time, but again, just missed this one. So this is really just a correction to get it back to what was previously approved. Findings on any commission met last month and recommended approval.
Okay. Is there, the public hearing is open. If anyone is here to address counsel regarding this measure, either in favor or in opposition, please come forward at this time. Okay, have we received comments outside the meeting, Dave or Rachel?
I have not received any.
I have not.
Please note that for the record, we'll close the public hearing and proceed to the vote.
Mayor, I move to approve ordinance number twenty-three dash nineteen, approving an amendment to table three four zero dash five point seven dash one of the Marion Code of Ordinances regarding building setbacks within the M one light manufacturing and M two general manufacturing zoning districts. Initial consideration.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to approve the initial consideration of ordinance number twenty-three dash nineteen, approving the amendment to table three forty dash five point seven dash one of the Marion Code of Ordinances regarding building setbacks within the light manufacturing and general manufacturing zoning districts. Discussion. Go ahead.
Dave, can you give, give me an example of where? Dave, can you give uh, give me an example of where one of these M one or M two uh areas would be within the city? And I'm, I guess I was wondering, i- it, does this apply to, say, Aircom Park?
Yeah, this would apply to all old industrial districts. It was just a renaming, so all the industrial districts, everything south, east and east of town. Uh, this does apply to the Aircom Park. It was just approved, and actually, this is the, because of their project, that's what prompted this amendment, because they were developing smaller industrial lots and uh you take the twenty-five foot setbacks, it's up a lot of real estate, so.
Okay, that, that was, I was just wanting to confirm that that was the initiating case. Okay, thank you.
Any other discussion? Questions? Okay, all those in favor of the initial consideration of ordinance number twenty-three dash nineteen, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. The motion is approved. Next item is a public hearing regarding a request to rezone property uh from Lynn County Ag Agricultural and Urban Services Residential to S R two suburban medium density, single family residential for the property located north of East Robbins Road and west of Albernett Road. The public hearing is now open. We have Nicole here for a presentation.
Good evening.
Hi.
So Fraser Land Investments LLC is seeking approval for a rezoning request. The property highlighted in red, there is just under twenty acres of property. As you can see, it sits on the north side of East Robbins Road. Um, it is bisected by Tower Terrace Road, which is currently under construction, so that is the reasoning for that gap in the two polygons. Request is to rezone the property from um the former county zoning to our S R two, which is suburban, medium density, single family residential zoning district. It is also with that, the applicant did submit a preliminary plat, which was included um in your packet, so you could see how the rezoning request does relate to what they are planning for this space. Um, both of them items did go to the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting in May. With that preliminary plat, they have proposed fifty-seven residential lots between the two different polygons. So with the comprehensive plan, um, the future land use map has this area designated as single family detached residential. We do go beyond our city limits by two miles. Land use plan for those areas, as you can see, the areas surrounding the two red polygons are also that single family detached residential. With this rezoning request of the S R two zoning district, it does align with what this um the land use map designates out in this area, as long as aligning with the goals and objectives of the comprehensive plan for single family residential. Um, because it does align, the applicant was not required to submit an amendment to the future land use map like you've seen um in past rezoning requests. So the intent of the S R two district, um, medium density, single family homes free from other uses except those that are com- compatible or convenient um to that neighborhood. With the Jacobs Landing preliminary plat that is being proposed, and you will see at a later date, um, this zoning request does meet the intent, or that preliminary plat does meet the intent of this zoning request um along with the bulk regulations of this zoning district. So the lots being proposed, um, when we get to that step, are aligning with what's required within that S R two zoning district for lot size. Um, this also aligns with the recently completed Cedar Rapids Marion Sea Avenue and Albernett Road Growth Study Area Plan that you have recently reviewed. Um, that study identifies this kind of property as low density residential, um, which is in that plan defined as ranging from point one seven acres to point nine one acres. So the proposed preliminary plat, um, again, for reference with the zoning request, all the lots being proposed with that do fit within that range, um, as well as our S R two um bulk regulations. So our comp plan, um, our recently reviewed growth study area um in the rezoning requests are all aligned with the um bulk regulations for the S R two district. When comparing to the surrounding properties, we've got county properties and we've got Cedar Rapids properties as well as um Marion. So to the north, um, we've got the S R L F, which is Cedar Rapids. And then we've got some urban service residential, both of those residential properties. They align with that growth city. Um, the proposed plan for this zoning, the lots are very similar in size. Um, the lots on the northern side of Tower Terrace are a little smaller than those on the southern side of Tower Terrace being proposed, but looking at that proposed preliminary plat in context with the rezoning request in those adjacent um zoning districts from Cedar Rapids and the county, all the lots are very similarly sized. We did receive one correspondence um prior to the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, um, that was provided to you in your packet. Um, just briefly, there was a resident on metal mills that felt the city should maintain that property as farm ground um to be used for supplying food to food pantries. Um, it's not city owned property. Um, it never has been. It is privately owned. Um, but that was one correspondence that we had received. Whereas the Planning and Zoning Commission, it did approve this request seven to zero at their May meeting. Questions of staff?
Thank you. Uh, we'll hold the questions until council discussion, but uh since the public hearing is open, we will um ask for any comments from uh members of the public. Uh, if anyone's here to address council, either in favor or in opposition to this measure, please come forward at this, at this time. Okay, seeing no one is coming forward, uh, we'll ask staff if there were any other comments outside the meeting besides the one that Nicole mentioned.
I have not received any.
Dave, anything? Okay, please note that for the record, we'll close the public hearing and then we'll uh move on to the motion and any uh discussion after that and questions for Nicole.
Mayor, I move to approve ordinance number twenty-three dash twenty, rezoning property from Lynn County Ag Agriculture, U S R, Urban Services Residential to S R two suburban medium density, single family residential for property located north of East Robbins Road and west of Albernett Road, Marion, Iowa, Fraser Land Investments LLC, and this is the initial consideration.
Second.
It has been moved in seconded to approve ordinance number twenty-three dash twenty, rezoning a property from Lynn County Ag and Urban Services Residential to S R two suburban medium density, single family residential for property located north of East Robbins Road and west of Albernett Road. Discussion, questions for staff? Go ahead, Sarah.
First, I'll say, um, I don't have a kink in my neck. I'm looking at the plat off of the packet, and I know it's long, so sideways, so without turning my computer, I'm trying to, I was just getting my bearings. Um, so supportive and I get that, and I can see, looks like the north. It's proposed that there'd even be a north neighborhood that could connect down in as well on the north side of Tower Terrace, so I can see how it's all fitting in. My question, and this is the drum I beat, so I, my apologies, but what what kind of a buffer and where does the thought, and I know this is comp plan kind of conversation, but we're going right up against this road here with residential again. And we've had, already had one situation where there's commercial in between residential, but because you can see the residential to the road, what's going in there, what's happening, so I know this is tight as we come through, because we're going, it's going through another neighborhood, and then it kind of goes by the church as we go into the Cedar Rapids side of it. Heading east, we're heading toward the Y, and we have housing along there, and then all of a sudden it'll be a gap. And then it'll start commercial once we cross Albernett Road. So is the plan and intent on both sides of Tower Terrace Road through that section, which is going to be a east-west connecting road, in my head, I can't get past that it isn't the future like a road diet of Collins Road, but you're going to have traffic. Are we allowing any kind of a buffer on that road? So when that is, as that is going through, we're not hearing from residents and people as to why we have a major thoroughfare going through, and they're hearing trucks or cars and all the different traffic. Where does it, where do we start transitioning this, what it was intended to be a commercial corridor to be commercial from a residential street? I mean, I see where it fits this section of the neighborhood, because we've already got houses in there, and this fits in there. You're not going to put a commercial building in the middle of a residential neighborhood, kind of more of like, as we're looking forward, we keep kind of piecing this together, and we keep putting houses right up against the road all the way across there, but maybe the intent is as we cross Albernett, that it becomes more commercial driven as it is sitting right now.
I did not look at the growth study area plan before this meeting. I do recall, though, some commercial being on that west side of the roundabout, um, where Tower Terrace Road um meets into Albernett Road, there would be, leave a little spot on the north side there of Tower Terrace Road, but a little more local, um, not necessarily regional or anything too large. But as we do travel along from this area, it just kind of grow in that commercial zone, but does take a, like you said, a transition.
Right. I mean, I couldn't, I, I looked forward, I say, I, I get it, this is a great growing neighborhood, and these are really nice homes, and this is a growth corridor. We've all seen it all the way out, Albernett Road as you head, you know, north. I just, I, I look, I see in my head, I'm waiting for the future um gas station that gets proposed where the ag corner is there, and now we have houses right up against it, and we haven't, they didn't know that was coming because it was ag when they built their home, and now we have a conflict. Um, and we have unhappy people in a happy place, so I was just wondering if within the department or that comes back with our comp plan of when we start looking at what that vision, if we, if we draw the line right now where that is, what's our vision east, and I see Ryan is moving right now, so maybe he has.
I was gonna, I was actually looking through the packet to see if there's, um, because right now, this is just a zoning request, so we don't have any sort of subdivision layout, do we?
There was one provided as reference.
That's what I was looking at when I'm going like this, because it's a nice layout, and it's connecting nicely. It looks like it fits really well with what's already there, so I mean, I'm supportive of it. This is, I'm probably jumping ahead to a future conversation, because this is fine, but I'm just saying, you know.
As we dive into the comp plan update, we will be using that growth area study plan to help guide what that is. Um, there was commercial, there was some, I believe, multifamily or higher density residential to help with that transition from these existing kind of medium density, lower density um residential neighborhoods, but that is something that will come with the comp plan update, uh, as you can see in.
And I just know as it goes west, it's going right through neighborhoods too, so I know that there's this corridor of neighborhood pieces, I'm probably, again, I'm probably thinking more is what's happens now to the east, or are we going to have what we're having right now on existing Tower Terrace where we have some um potentially compatible to what the neighborhood is hoping to see as new neighbors, and then we have upset people, so I was just curious, because I don't think we have a plan with what's going to sit next to that on the north side yet, because that's right, and that egg, her egg, because it's privately. So, and this can be a future conversation, this, I mean, this is fine, but.
At this time, yeah, this is the document we have to go off of for requests. Um, that is something that, yeah, will come forward with, I said, the comp plan update.
Dave, did you have something to add?
Uh, sorry, no, Nicole, yeah, there was a, a neighborhood note on all four intersections, all, I'm sorry, all four corners of that intersection of Albernett Road, that it faced into potentially multifamily, that we have a pretty large drainage area, creek, crick, uh, in that area as well. And then it starts um transitioning to residential uh after that, so most of our commercial activity in a multifamily is definitely on the intersection and then the, the length of Tower Terrace, tenth street, so. So in this area, it's not, as of right now, with the comp plan, comp plan set up and the zoning ordinance set up, it's not planned for any commercial uh until you get really east of Newcastle Drive.
Okay.
Which kind of dead ends um
Yep.
up into the cornfield there.
Yep, I walk up there quite often, so, okay.
So it'll all be really more east of that street, the way the comprehensive plan and the zoning map is set up today, so if there's going to be amendments, it'll become to the council for their.
Okay, because right now you could have even to the east of this have another neighborhood even yet. They could be neighbors too.
You've got eighty acres between two forties between this neighborhood and really where we kind of anticipate the commercial or multifamily to even begin, so uh it's quite a distance. Councilwoman, one of the things that we have staff has talked about, and I believe Dave, correct me if I'm wrong, but we're actually, um, Dave or Community Development will be giving a presentation to council the twentieth, Dave, is that accurate? Sorry. Eighteenth. Eighteenth. Uh, about kind of the Tower Terrace corridor and the highway thirteen corridor, and start kind of talking about some long-term thoughts on that as well.
Okay, great.
Look forward to that.
Well, this looks like a nice development.
Great question, though. Thank you for, for asking that. Any other discussion or questions? Okay, anything else to add, Nicole, before we vote? Okay. We'll go ahead and vote. All those in favor of the initial consideration of ordinance number twenty-three dash twenty, please say aye. All those opposed, please say no. The motion is approved. Next item on the agenda is a discussion and uh regarding fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five budget calendar. Leanne?
Good evening, Mayor and City Council, and Happy New Year. Or shall I say Happy New Fiscal Year? Kim beat me to the punch with the directors this week, so I got to do it at council.
Very good, Leanne.
With the new fiscal year, of course, comes a new budget development calendar year. I always like to put this light up there. Last year was the first year we put a calendar in front of city councils as a team. Our whole purpose is to help the city council make informed decisions, but also to allow the public to kind of plug in and have several chances throughout the year to see what's going on in the city of Marion with our budget. I included the full calendar in the packet, but here's just some of the highlights of the budget calendar that we're looking at for this coming budget year. Um, I've highlighted the February through March because of some of the changes that have been made with the property tax legislation this last year. I'm going to touch on that in a moment here, but just going to pause and highlight a couple of the items that you see on the screen. Um, budget kickoff is happening this month. In fact, we have a meeting at the next E L T meeting to executive leadership team meeting to give more formal instruction on that. We'll have the strategic plan update in the fiscal year twenty-three report in the August through September timeframe. We'll bring back the capital improvement program and the asset replacement discussion in October, November, December and January. We're going to have the community survey results just before we go into our budget work session in January, and then from there, we carry on through adoption, going through the required legal process. So highlighting kind of that February through March, here's kind of the changes that were made with House File seven eighteen this past spring. Essentially, they've eliminated that max levy notice in hearing, which I saw as a very positive thing, because it was misconstrued to the public, because it didn't include the full levy, just a portion of the levy. In lieu of doing that, they've now passed a new requirement where we have to provide the county what we believe our levy will be, and the county then has five days to mail out to all the residents the full picture with all jurisdictions, a statement that kind of gives the picture of what they're expected to pay for the next year. Huge benefit to the public in understanding what they would expect to be paying the next fiscal year. However, it does create a little bit of a pinch point, the county, five days to turn that information around. turn that information around, and does make us as city have our budget a little sooner than we normally would, our final budget. And when I say final, you could technically provide to the county a levy rate higher than what we end at, but with property tax statements at that level going out to this, to the residents, we're going to want it to be as accurate and as close as possible. So the question that I have for council tonight is the timing. In the budget, in the council packet, in the budget calendar, I laid out just following our normal council schedule where we could squeeze that public hearing in. And it would be the twenty-first, which does not work well when you think about that five-day turnaround. So if the county mails, the notice is the twentieth, then the residents won't have had a chance to see it before our public hearing date. So what I would propose is that we do a special meeting. I put, and when I say a special meeting, it has to be a special meeting anyway. That's the other thing with the law, it has to be a special meeting where there is no other business discussed. So when I said following the normal council date, we would open a meeting, hold the public hearing, close that meeting, open another meeting. So my question to City Council is essentially whether you would like us to keep with the twenty-first, which I do think bears risk in that if the county, for some reason, does not get the notices out the twentieth, then we're going to have to reset anyway. So my recommendation would be that we hold two special meetings sometime the week of the twenty-fifth to the twenty-ninth. I just put it in twenty-eighth for visual purposes, where we would actually have two special meetings, one for the public hearing in which nothing else can be discussed, but then the second to actually set the date for the adoption of the budget. And with that, I'll turn it over to council, too.
So Leanne, on Wednesday, the twentieth, that's the fifth day after the county has received our information.
We are required to have the information to the county the fifteenth. They are required to mail the statements by the twentieth. It literally says the dates in the, in the bill.
Can you, can you move faster than those stated dates? I, I'm just asking from a, from a legal perspective.
The complexity for the county is that they will also need the information from the schools and the county rate, so.
Yeah. Okay, so, okay, that answers that question. Now, and accelerate those at all.
I mean, we could certainly do our best to accelerate providing our information, but we don't have control over the other jurisdictions.
Well, and certainly the county is going to take as much time as they need to make sure they're mailing the right information, too. So, okay, all right. So that answers that. I guess just in my general way of thinking, the longer we can give between when the mailing takes place to when we have our special meetings, that seems to make a lot of sense.
I agree. Is there anyone who disagrees or has a different thought on that?
Makes sense?
With that, I'll work with Rachel and Alicia to get a date figured out. I put the twenty-eighth up here, but we'll see what works with your schedules.
What's the latest date it could happen? Sorry.
I don't have it in front of me, but it's a very tight window because of the ten and twenty rule for the adoption of the budget. So when I say the ten and twenty for the publication, we have to set the date before we can send the notice, the paper for the adoption. And you're looking at adoption that following month.
Steve?
So make sure I'm clear. The reason in moving it from the twenty-first into the week of the twenty-fourth is so that people receiving those notices have at least some time to at least react to them and perhaps come to our meeting and, and attend and/or make comments.
Yes.
That, that's the main purpose.
Yes.
Of pushing it out.
The whole intent of the bill was.
Okay. Yep.
Yep.
And that would accommodate that. Okay.
Anyone else?
Just, oh, go ahead. Yeah. Actually, Ryan, just sort of a, a general comment here, and I'm reflecting on the Happy New Year greeting that Leanne gave us. Who knew, who knew our chief financial officer could have a sense of humor, really?
She actually cracked a joke earlier in the meeting, that, so she's on a roll today.
Okay, anything else, Leanne? Thank you very much. All right, at this time, we have a public forum, which is time for comments from members of the public on any item at all. If anyone is here, is here to address counsel, please come forward. Okay, see, no one is coming forward. We will close this part of the meeting and move on to council comments. Start with Councilmember Ms. Kimmern.
Sure, yeah. Lots happened since the last time we had a meeting. I feel like the fireworks event on July third was really great, well-attended. It was really fun to see that many people show up to allow and just interact and hang out. But I also wanted to bring up as, of course, we've all received various correspondences about our fireworks ordinance, and I'm sure others will probably bring that up, but just bringing that up is probably a future topic of discussion, in case someone else brought it up. But I assume someone else is going to bring it up, too, so, yeah.
Two comments, a question. I don't know if you have the answer, Seth, but do we have any estimate of how many people were at our fireworks on the third? I try to swag it, and I have come up with different numbers.
Councilman, what did you have? Because staff was talking about this the other day. What did you have?
I was around three to four thousand.
We're between six and seven.
Oh, you're way higher than me then. Okay, six and seven. Okay, very good. And so my other comment is, during this meeting, I have three grandkids out celebrating Parks and Recreation Month, because they're all at different places right now playing baseball and softball. So I'm telling you, they're getting used all the time. We get to see all of them during the month of June and July. So appreciate them being, being out there.
Yeah, so maybe picking up on the parks theme for a moment. As a introduction to Farmer's Market, Toby Park, I'll be there, come one, come all, buy stuff, stop in and say hi. Okay, but seriously, you know, one of the comments that we, we receive consistently, whether we're in the library during the colder weather, or whether, you know, we're at Toby Park is, you know, primary comment, we love the parks and the activities. What's happening? And there, you know, just positive feedback relative to the opportunities being created. So Seth and, and Bill, for the library side of things, thank you so much for that, because people do comment on that. Let's see, I covered off on Farmer's Market. That's Saturday morning, if I didn't mention it. I'll be there. But to pick up on Gage's comment, brief comment about fireworks, one of the, one of the comments that I received, and I think, I know we're going to return to this at a future session. We'll have more review of our ordinance and discussion about our current thinking and experiences. But one of the comments that was most impactful to me that we received here in the last couple of days was, the person's comment really was, anymore, you have essentially commercial-grade pyrotechnics that people are able to set off from their backyards. It's not the simple bottle rockets and small caliber, you know, firecrackers and the snakes and the sparklers. It's commercial grade. And that seems just to cast a different situation that then elevates the concern that those who have sensitivities to fireworks would naturally want to have a complaint about. So I just wanted to get that on the record as something that I picked up on from one of the comments that was made to me.
Just wanted to also say that the Uptown Market is this Saturday morning, so not just out of Toby. So there's competition for you, yeah.
You throwing down the gauntlet.
We need a second office hours table at the Uptown Market.
That's all. Sarah?
I'll just, I'm gonna, I've been gone, so my apologies for missing the last meetings. I just want to give a brief shout out to our volunteers with Peg and Phil, who are working on the garden out here. If you're out by City Hall and you get a chance to stop by the garden, Peg has been battling some groundhogs, but in the meantime, has also managed. That's why you'll see all the little things hanging there to try to distract them and the bunny rabbits from eating the lettuce and.
Pyrotechnic guy earlier could probably help with the ground.
Problem is, I'm having a vision of, yes, because it's living under the greenhouse. So I'm having a little bit of a, of a flashback to that, or, you know, PTSD with that movie. But I wanted to give a shout out to them as for just doing a great job on this garden here, as we talk about food pantry work, all in, in a very dry year. And also, we have had incredible attendance at Sunrise Yoga in the month of June. We took this last weekend off for the Fourth of July. We're back this week. And then the week of the fifteenth is corridor corporate games. That tends to be a pretty large crowd because of the people attending as part of that program. But we've had over a hundred people in attendance every Saturday morning for that event. So big shout out to our instructors who give their time, volunteer their time to be out there teaching for that event. And then, you know, we've been talking about the fireworks and Fireflies, but I know there's been a number of events that, so just a brief shout out to the chamber here in Uptown, because they had a women's, they had a shopping, small business shopping bus that was out the other week, they have a golf outing next week, they've got the market this week. I know there's a lot of events in the Uptown space for our community members this summer, and so I just want to give them a shout out for all of the work that goes into making these events look so easy, and they keep happening, and Ryan is raising his hand, so. And Eat, Drink, and Be Marion is next Thursday, too. So, yes, so they've had a couple of weeks of a lot, along with the city events. So please support them and the sponsors that make those events happen for our community members.
Thank you. Eat, Drink, and Be Marion. I'm donating a cooking, Cooking with the Mayor class at the library. So everybody bid on that, please. I had a chance over the weekend to, to do a bike ride on the Indian Creek Trail and Grantwood Trail. It really is the most beautiful way to experience Marion, so encourage everybody to get out and check out those trails. Kudos to our, our team for making those happen. And I, I, there were so many people out on the trail, too. That was really neat to see. People, I, I recognize people from Hiawatha and Cedar Rapids and from the region riding on the trails, and it's great to see those connections, and it's a great way to experience the city and experience our, our community. I had a chance last weekend to participate in a project marking the unmarked graves of African-Americans buried at Oak Hill Cemetery. So that was a, a nice event. And also this last week, I had the opportunity to speak to forty Skogman realtors about what's happening in Marion and all the great things that we're working on and the things that are coming down the road. And it's a really engaging session. The fireworks event, just, just a beautiful, beautiful display of community. When you can, I, I, if your estimate was six or seven thousand people, there's probably another three or four thousand that are in the neighborhoods around there. And, you know, in the school parking lots and in the Y parking lot and watching those fireworks. So just, again, the, the planning that goes into that, and the, it was just an orderly event and just such a great community feel. Everyone was having a great time. So congratulations to all who worked really hard on making that happen, and it takes a lot of coordination from all our departments and community partners. And just had the, had the pleasure of giving a greeting on, on the stage. And I want to thank Gage and Steve for joining me and Ryan. I suggested that next year, we had, we, at that, before we do the kickoff, we have a council pie eating contest up on the stage. How's that? Tomorrow, or on Saturday, I'll be reading a proclamation at Pride Fest in Cedar Rapids. And just want to mention, we're all aware that Nick Glue has resigned his position at Medco to take a different opportunity. So I just want to thank him publicly for all his work, all these years, over, I think, well, I guess, nine or 10 years that he's been in that position. But he's certainly been part of the community for a lot longer and, and then community leadership and helping move the community forward. Before that position, he was the director of the Uptown District, the first director for the Uptown District. But we've worked together for a long time in the community, moving Marion forward, and appreciate all his work and wish him the best on behalf of our council, our team, and the entire community. So with that, we have a closed session.
Ready? Mayor, I move to adjourn the closed session regarding litigation as permitted under Section twenty-one point five one C of the Code of Iowa, and this is for two separate items.
Second. Moving seconded to adjourn the closed session regarding litigation as permitted under Section twenty-one point five one C of the Code of Iowa. May we have the legal counsel's statement, please?
Thank you, Your Honor. I've reviewed the proposed subject matter for the closed sessions and find the same to be appropriate under Iowa Code, Section twenty-one point five point C.
Okay, any discussion before we vote? And we have the roll call, please.
Mr. Kimmern?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Harper?
Yes.
Mayor Abalosli?
Yes.
Mr. Brandt?
Yes.
Ms. Mensah?
Yes.
Okay, we're adjourned to closed session. We'll return to open session upon completion. Thank you, everyone, for joining us.